Okay, we'll take attendance for the roll call.
John Black?
Yeah.
Yeah, Howard?
Here.
Ken Cool?
Here.
Ben Gordon?
Here.
Kenny Jones?
Here.
George Hubbard?
Here.
Jake Newman?
Here.
And this is President Chris Rader?
Here.
Okay, at this time, if you want to look at the proposed agenda, if there's not any changes or suggestions, I entertain a motion to approve. Ben moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. At this time, we'll look at our previous meeting minutes. We need to go back to our January meeting. At our March meeting, we had, we had a few corrections that needed to be done, so we tabled it to this month. It looks like the necessary corrections have been made. Once you look them over, if they, if they look good, if we need to make any more corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve the January twenty-fourth meeting minutes. Is there support?
I support it.
Ben moved and seconded to approve the January twenty-fourth Planning Commission meetings minutes. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carried. And then our last meeting was on March first. The minutes are in front of you. Okay, a motion to approve the March first minutes, is there support? Ben moved and seconded to approve the March first Planning Commission meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Next item up, John Black, if you got a Township Board report.
Well, we're still, we're still looking for a couple more members to sit on the committee to look at the, we got the APPA money, or the, oh, the... And we would like to use that as seed money to start working on a new Township Hall. And we're still looking for a couple people to sit on that committee. Our last meeting, one of the main things that we worked on was, we approved our, to put chloride and brine on the Township roads. We have forty, forty, I think it was forty-three miles of dirt road in the Township. Every year, we put three applications, two thousand gallons to the mile. And that bill comes to forty-two thousand. We also have some other proposed road contracts that we'll be looking at after we do our budget meeting. That'll be coming up in the next month, and then we'll be working on... We have about, just for an example, of how much prices have went up. One price for a mile of blacktop was eighty-six thousand dollars. And it wasn't that many years ago, we were doing that for thirty to forty thousand dollars, so... Yes, we'll, we'll usually get recommendations from the county road commission, and then we can adjust it from there. And we can also ask for additional contracts at the same time. Other than that, I guess, it's kind of what went on at the last meeting.
Thank you, John. As far as correspondence, this committee received no, no paperwork or letters, or fan mail, so we'll move on. At this time, we're going to offer general public comment. Now, keep in mind, we are going to have, obviously, a public comment on the hearing in regards to wind and the proposed wind ordinance, but if there's any other issues you want to bring forward, man on the moon, or the tigers, or we're open to any, any suggestions, feel free. You've got three minutes, and please state where you're from. Anybody from Winfield Township could go first, if you'd like. So I'll open it up for general public comment.
Hello? Julia Potratz, Winfield Township. I was under the impression that there may be some correspondence that we received back from the attorney regarding the zoning referendum tonight, which we haven't brought up. So before we go into the public hearing for wind, I'm just curious if that's the case. That's what Phyllis told me.
Yes, there, there is correspondence to the Township Board related to...
You won't be sharing it tonight?
The Township Board has to make decisions related to, so I can't speak on behalf of the Township Board. The Township Board has to do everything in public.
So you won't be sharing any of that correspondence tonight?
Well, it's, it's subject to the trainee plan, so no, I will not.
Okay.
This is Pam Hemmets, Montcom Township. Short. This is in reference to a lot of things, but it's a letter. Some of you may have seen it. Yeah, tiptoes. It was in the Lakeview newspaper, and it was written by Dr. Arden Anderson. And he used to live in the general area in Montcom County, and he has family here. And this is what he wrote, and it particularly is related to wind, but I don't know if it'll take maybe both my chances to speak, so... He says, "We do certainly live in interesting times, and then again, each generation could make such a statement. It seems that common sense, which is very uncommon, has completely gone by the wayside. But most importantly, it seems that the sense of community has vanished. I remember my parents talking about the Great Depression and what my grandparents endured just to survive. Central to their survival was shared community, specifically being sure the neighbor had food. Everyone got their crops in and out. If a farmer were injured or ill, the neighbors got together and harvested the crops for him so he could still feed his family. I saw some of this as a child with my parents, helping neighbors in need and taking no pay for the deed. Today, that seems to have been replaced with a predator mentality. Neighbors barely know each other, rarely speak to each other, and care little about the welfare of the community. Greed, which is founded in the fear of not having, seems to be the order of the day. No more is this evident than in the implementation of some of the Green New Deal fantasies. Examples are the liquid carbon dioxide pipeline running from Illinois ethanol plants to South Dakota oil fields. It is a twenty-foot diameter pipeline that runs across cropland, disrupting drainage, tile irrigation lines, terraces, and overall property rights. Different than a leak in an oil pipeline, a leak in this pipe will involve an explosion instantly freezing. Freezing of anything the liquid CO2 contacts, and death by asphyxiation of any living animal, including humans. Another is the wind farms being pushed all around the country. In both cases, farmers are being misled to believe that these projects are good for the environment and safe for local citizens. Neither is true. Whether it's the CO2 pipeline or the wind farm, if the companies get fifty percent plus one of the landowners to sign on to the project, they can legally implement eminent domain and arbitrarily take your land for the project. Pretty interesting for all these conservative landowners who contend to be small government, independent rights, cut tax advocates, but of course, they are the ones...
Just finish your sentence, ma'am. Your three minutes are up.
I'll, I'll take it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Kevin Murphy, Winfield Township. We've been to a lot of these meetings, you're all aware of that, probably Kyle is. My feeling, or my statement, is going to be, you guys are going to run this meeting. He's here for one purpose, to give legal advice, not opinions, not I think, or whatnot. Whatever he says should not be taken into account. If you have a legal question that you're not sure of, ask him, he can answer, otherwise he can punch out and go home. I think we all are on the same page for that. Thank you.
My name is Mitchell Potratz, I'm Winfield Township. Just a simple, quick statement I wanted to say instead of yelling it. Trying to raise money and build a new Township Hall. Why don't we cut all the lawyer fees and get rid of lawyers and stop wasting our money on, I don't know what the heck's going on, because this is almost like, what I've seen online from the, what you want for wind, you could have just copied from anyone over in Grasham County. You didn't need to pay someone to make that.
Chris Stoudt, Cato Township. I'd like to know how many of you got a conflict of interest setting up here, that own property with Winley saying?
Jonathan Quakel, Cato Township. Based on our knowledge of the community and conversations we've had with our neighbors, we believe there will be a high demand of participation in this area once the final terms with Apex are set. November fourth, two thousand nineteen, to whom it may concern. Apex Clean Energy has expressed an interest to develop a new wind farm in our area of Montcom County, and has approached our landowner group to discuss the potential for signing easements. We have convened a leadership committee representing approximately fifteen thousand acres of land in the Montcom Wind Project footprint. We are exclusively negotiating in good faith with Apex for long-term wind easements with Apex Clean Energy, and hope to conclude those negotiations and execute easements by the end of this year. Based on our knowledge of the community and the conversations we've had with our neighbors, we believe there will be a high degree of participation in this area once the final terms with Apex are set. Sincerely, Chris Rader. With a handful of other names. I've read this a few times, it's kind of becoming a little redundant now, and I'll continue reading it every month for as long as I need to. There's clearly a conflict of interest. As of two thousand nineteen, you still were not talking to your actual neighbors. Last year, we went out and talked to the surrounding people that did not have large portions of farmland to rent to Apex, and they were highly against the project. In fact, a handful of them have already listed their house for sale and have moved out of the community. There are a lot of people that are afraid to speak out against the big farmers, and it's quite disturbing, honestly. You guys here are to protect the community, look out for the health, safety, and welfare of your community. Not for specific individuals who have signed lease agreements with the wind company. I heard once, once you harvest the officials, then you can harvest the wind. And I think it's pretty clear that that's what's been happening in Montcom County for the past couple years. Individuals sitting on this board continue to receive checks, payments from Apex Clean Energy. They openly will admit that, yes, your property values will be impacted about eight percent. That's a nice number. Realistically, that's anywhere between twenty-five and forty percent. Who's going to make up that difference for the landowners when our biggest investment, majority of us here, are, is our house? Property, it's something that everybody takes for granted at this point. Quite sad.
Ryan Vansalkema, Winfield Township. I'm a twenty-year business professional in the mortgage, banking, and finance industry. My friend Bob Scott gave me some additional information, as he's, you know, local as well, and done this for other Townships. The total taxable value of Apex, Apex leased properties in Winfield Township is about five point seven million dollars. However, based on Montcom County Department of Equilization records, the taxable value of all properties in Winfield Township is broken down as follows. I'm going to use approximate numbers, they're close. Agricultural, fourteen point one million. Residential, seventy-three point seven million. Commercial, hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Industrial, three hundred and thirty-two thousand. For a ballpark total, eighty-eight point four million dollars. This means leased landowners pay less than six point four percent of the property taxes being paid by all property owners in Winfield Township. Bottom line, ninety-four percent of us pay the taxes in this Township. Just because you signed a lease with Apex does not give you the right. You're outnumbered. Break it down further, as far as census goes, there's forty-seven leases on record for Winfield Township. We gave a ballpark per family total, about a hundred and forty-one people. That's six percent. Break it down even further, corrupt officials. You guys are two percent, with all your family members, all your leases signed. That's two percent of the population of Winfield Township, according to the two thousand twenty census, of twenty-two hundred and seventy-eight people in Winfield Township. How ninety-eight percent get screwed? Why? Do what's right. Listen to the people. Thank you.
Kelly Jefferson, Douglas Township. One, thank you guys for sticking your necks out, not only for the people with, that want the wind, but also those that don't want it. You say, you know, we hear people are moving out. Well, they said that when Trump was going into office too, that everybody was going to move. That's fine. We can get other people into these houses. And then Jessica went on to say that their houses and their land is their biggest resources. So are ours. And I'm referring to the farmers in a general sense, so that's why I'm not misconstrued again. And then the gentleman said that fourteen percent were agriculture. There's some, there are some leases that were signed that don't have an agricultural background. They just tend to have enough land to sign it. So it's not only are you guys talking for the quote-unquote "big farmers", which I don't know of any around here, because everything is a struggle, but you're also talking for the little folks that want their five to ten acres signed. So just keep that in mind also. And the fact that those people that own the five to ten acres that have signed, they're also voters in this Township. A lot of the land, a lot of the lake owners don't necessarily live in some of the Townships in which they are hollering about. They tend to vote outside in their own home districts. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Cock, and I am from Winfield Township. I live on Winfield Lake. I'm going to ask people tonight, when you agree with statements that are being said, that you stand and show support to the people that are talking up here. I'm going to ask, for the lake setback for Winfield Lake is a great concern to me, as I'm a resident of this lake and I have been for twenty years. First, the half a mile setback from the water's edge is ridiculous. That's my front yard, so you're going to start measuring, and my front yard go all the way through my property, and then you're going to go a half a mile beyond that. So it doesn't count what I live on or what I own. You get the rights to that. So today, I got thinking, and I started driving a half a mile as Deena Road. You know whose property starts behind me at Deena Road? Phyllis Larson. So if you measure from the back of my lot, she doesn't get as many turbines. Then, Maple Valley, which is the other side of my lake, is doing one mile setbacks. Not a half a mile, they're doing one. But you know what? If you measured one mile, Phyllis Larson would get zero turbines now. So that's really important. So I guess what I was, my whole thing is, is to hell with your neighbors. That's the attitude that you guys have. This is what I want. I'm a member of the board, I'm a member of the Planning Commission. Screw my neighbors, screw my community, this is what I want. You're not listening to any of us. It doesn't matter that, that I don't want it. My property doesn't matter to any of you. You're not representing us. You're not listening.
Any other comments for general public comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment at this time. Good. At this time, we'll, we'll get into our public hearing on the proposed wind ordinance. Kyle O'Meara will kind of lead us, walk us through the ordinance adoption process.
Thank you, Chair. For the benefit of, I think, the public and the Planning Commission, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the general zoning ordinance adoption process in Michigan. I understand that, you know, many in the audience have been to a lot of meetings, so this may be a repeat. However, I think it's important to give context of where, what kind of expectations you may have, and what to expect from the meeting. So, under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, when you have a zoning, proposed zoning ordinance amendment, you first have to conduct a public hearing. So this is the public hearing. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission can make a recommendation for the ordinance. So they can recommend proving the ordinance as drafted, they can recommend it with amendments, or they could recommend not adopting it and going back to drafting it. After that, the recommendation, assuming it's approved or amended, would go to the County Planning Commission for review. The County Planning Commission would have thirty days to review the ordinance, and they would offer comment. The comment is not binding on the Township. They will give the comment back to the Township Board.
The Township Board?
Assuming it's after the County Planning Commission has reviewed it, would review the County Planning Commission's comments, they would review the ordinance that has been prepared or submitted to it, and can do, have, they have three options. They can approve it, they could deny it, they can approve it with changes. As I think everyone knows, after that, if an ordinance is adopted, there is, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act allows the referendum process, which is a direct democracy component of zoning ordinance amendments. So, speaking a little bit to the logistics of a public hearing, generally, if you look at, if you have an agenda, the process works where the Chair or the Planning Commission would open the public hearing. They could do so through a voice vote, or the Chair can do it. Then, there would be public comment on the wind ordinance, which is similar to what you have just done. However, it would be, you can speak about whatever you want, but the intent is to speak about the proposed wind ordinance. What I've found successful in other public hearings is, if you have questions, we would write down the questions, or someone could write down the questions, and potentially answer the questions, if they're in a form that can be answered. After that, the public hearing would be closed. The Planning Commission would be able to deliberate the ordinance, they would be able to answer any questions, and they could consider the proposed ordinance. Chair, I think that is all I wanted to mention for the public hearing. I would also be, you know, available, of course, during the meeting for questions, or... I know that at a March meeting, there was a number of provisions that were requested to be added to the ordinance. I could show you where those... There were a number of provisions requested to be added to the ordinance. I could show, I could show you where those provisions are added in the ordinance.
Well, I think at this time, we will, we will open the public hearing. The first step would be to have public hearing, public comment on the proposed wind ordinance. Similar, similar rules here. You'll have three minutes to speak and state where you're from, and we'll allow Winfield Township residents to speak first.
Tom Cock, Winfield Lake. I don't know if you guys saw this, there's an article in the paper here about wind energy company that was sentenced to probation in order to pay more than eight million dollars in fines, restitution, after at least a hundred and fifty eagles were killed over the past decade. This, there were three counts violating the migratory bird treaty act. And basically, we've been hearing a lot from this board that that's not an issue, right? So I live over on Winfield Lake, and I'm looking at these setbacks, and as my wife said, you know, instead of going from the back of our property, we're looking at, let's go from the lake. And it just doesn't seem right. And a half mile doesn't seem right. Maple Valley, they just passed a, a one mile from the back of the property, okay? And they're on the other side of the lake from me, okay? Even then, with a mile, a mile's not very much. And the amount of birds, and I'm talking about all migratory birds, all birds, and eagles, and all come to our lake. It's a migratory place. It's where they feed, it's where they fish. And to me, this is something that I really would, would hope that you guys would consider and, and, and think about it, and not just for the lakes, but think about it for the people, no matter where they want to live, in the county. Nobody really wants to look up and see these, see these turbines, and they certainly don't want them killing the local wildlife. So I also, for, for a living, I am a environmental specialist, and I have to go in and I have to look at the safety, health, and well-being of everything before I implement anything whatsoever, and I have to dig in and I have to go. And it seems like these setbacks of one point one from the road, or one point one from a, from, from a property line, seems to me that this is, is ridiculous, because if you look at the safety, and you look at the equipment that's out there, this stuff, you, you take one of these blades that's six hundred and seventy foot tall, comes off one of these things, that one point one isn't going to do squat at height. So I think we really need to look at height, we really need to, to, to look at some... So I think we really need to look at height, we really need to, to, to look at some, what is the safety aspect for this community? And, and that's really, you know, where I'm at. So, um, I know a lot of you, I sat on this, uh, the same board here for a lot of years and, uh, respect you guys. So please, uh, take into account, uh, what all these people are, are, are saying and, and, uh, if, if you would, anybody out there that agrees, please stand up.
Um, I'd like to address the height limit issue and the fact that we have nothing, um, as far as a height limit for commercial, uh, wind turbines. Um, that, that's totally irresponsible. Um, there's a height limit, uh, currently in our zoning ordinance for Winfield Township in general of three hundred feet. Um, so to have nothing for, uh, commercial wind turbines is, uh, crazy. Um, Kenny did bring up the single, um, WEX, uh, you know, for onsite service only and how we do have a height limit for those, which is a hundred and thirty feet. Um, so again, I don't know why we wouldn't have them for commercial turbines. Um, and then he also brought up the setback and you guys kind of brushed it off because it's for single WEX, but it, the setback for the single onsite ones is two feet from a property line. So why do we have one point five times from the property line for commercial turbines that are gonna be over six hundred foot tall? You, you know, you could go with three hundred feet and stick with what we have, even five hundred feet, it's better than nothing, you're just gonna have nothing? No height limit? So I, I'm asking that you reconsider that tonight, that's what we're here for, for you guys to make amendments if you feel they're appropriate. Um, and if anyone else is, please stay.
My name is Guy White and my wife and I live on Church Road here in Winfield Township. And I guess I don't mind standing by myself, so the rest of you can stay seated. We, uh, we have signed, um, a contract. We only have ten acres, there's no way that they'll ever be able to put one on our site. And several of our neighbors have already signed contracts also. When I think of all the changes that have taken place in this country over the years, and I'm seventy-one years old, so I've seen a lot, when you look at the current electrical grid structure, how many of you would say that a wind tower is more ugly than a coal-burning electrical plant? How many, how many of you would say that a wind tower is more dangerous than a nuclear power electrical plant? And we have one, at least one of those in this state.